So, welcome to our July 23rd, 2024 Regular Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Barry Altschuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding. Steve Wang.
Here.
Diana Clopton.
All right, well, would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I was so excited about getting the meeting started. I didn't even pull it up on my computer here, so give me one second. Make sure I'm not missing anything. Give me five seconds. We also, the board participated. Thank you to the Village of Barrington for the recognition in the Fourth of July Parade this year. So that was a lot of fun. And thanks to those of you that were able to attend. I also attended Sousa Col the Musical a few weeks ago. It was a very fun show. And I'm looking, really looking forward to watching this talented group of students as they move from middle school into high school and beyond over the next few years. I also was able to attend a scholarship award luncheon in Chicago that was hosted by the Illinois Restaurant Association Education Foundation, where they awarded over $115,000 of scholarships to 48 students from across the state. For those students that are attending culinary programs in 20 different colleges across the country. And I'm very proud to report that three of those students were Barrington High School alumni. So that was very exciting. And thank you, Dr. Winkelman and your staff, for considering the changes to our board meeting format. So Will will be, he wrote about it in his weekly report, and we will be talking about that at our August 13th meeting in an open session discussion. So if you've got any comments or concerns, please get them to Dr. Winkelman and myself. And then, Board, also, with our priorities to continuously improve our staff and community relations, I do have some dates for having dinner with our, with our teachers' union. So I'll send out a note with those dates, and we'll be able to sign up for those activities in the coming year. Other dates that I do know right now that we can put on our calendars are the new educator luncheon on Wednesday, August 7th, and the Welcome Back orientation is Thursday, August 15th. So I think Dr. Winkelman's going to be following up with those dates in the weekly report, but I wanted to get those dates in your head earlier than later. And that concludes my report.
Could you just say those dates again, please?
Yes, August 7th and August 15th.
Thank you.
A Wednesday and a Thursday. And we have no public comment. No one signed up for public comment. So we will move directly into Dr. Winkelman's report.
All right. Thank you, Sandra. So as you mentioned, it's been a few weeks since our last meeting. And as we all enjoy some time away during the summer months, there are many things that, in my opinion, make Barrington a very special place, but one is the annual Fourth of July Parade, where our community comes together to celebrate our nation's independence. And as you can see on the screen, as we're all getting a good chuckle and so forth, we had a good time. We have some photos displayed of our Board of Education. We're very thankful and appreciative that our school district and Board of Education was selected to be the grand marshal and able to lead the parade and festivities on the Fourth of July with our community. Also, since we've been away, our school district continues to provide innovative learning experiences for our students and be considered leaders in public education. Last week, our district was invited to provide a presentation to superintendents from across the country at the NCERT Summer Leadership Summit that was hosted right here in Chicago. NCERT is the National Center for Education Research and Technology. And we were able to share and explain the experiences that our high school students participated in our new GEM program. I want to thank Dr. Byrne and two of our Barrington High School teachers, Laura Turngren and Justine Rovin, who are pictured here, who participated and joined us for the presentation to the Superintendent's Council. It was really enjoyable being able to share some of the experiences of our students and the benefits of the program. And some of the superintendents and districts from across the country have actually inquired about coming to visit sometime during the school year and see the program first and learn from us. So excited to share. Next slide is about student enrollment. We continue to register students and families throughout the summer months, and we carefully monitor our sections and class sizes. At your place this evening is hot off the press. These are the elementary enrollment figures as of last week, on the 17th. So happy to report, as you can see, the vast majority of our classes at each of our schools and grade levels are within or under class size guidelines established by the Board. Just for explanation's sake, we indicate class sizes that are above guidelines in red font, within guidelines in black font, and those that fall under guidelines in blue font. So I believe we will continue to monitor our enrollment, but we're in really good shape as we now prepare for our students to return in just a few weeks in August. And I will have one final update for the Board on August 13th, but as you can see, unless we have an enrollment surge, I think we're well positioned to start the year and have class sizes across all eight schools that adhere to our class size guidelines. All right. Then I also want to report, the Government Finance Officers Association recently awarded our district with a certificate of achievement. This award is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. Its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. This report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, which I think aligns with our board priorities, to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and groups to read the report. So once again, I want to thank Dr. Bynne, Sarah Lager, and all of the members of our Business Services Department for their outstanding work. I believe this is the third award that we have received this year based on the good work and their efforts in the business services. So again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And speaking of Dr. Bynne, tonight is officially Dave's last board meeting as he enters his retirement. And we want to display a few photos of Dr. Bynne over the years, and I think they capture some of the qualities, interest, and lighthearted demeanor that Dave has brought to work each day in addition to outstanding fiscal management and planning for the district. You may even notice a familiar face in the lower right-hand corner, standing next to Dr. Bynne at the grill, Brian Harris, who as superintendent at the time was the superintendent that hired and brought Dave to our district. And I believe we, as a district, have certainly benefited from that decision and have enjoyed working with Dave over the past several years. So Dave, once again, thank you and congratulations on your upcoming retirement.
Thank you very much.
I think you need to grow this mustache back.
I know.
That was, that was a lot of my life.
And you're coming back for barbecue every year, right?
Absolutely. You're cooking, I'm eating.
All right.
So that concludes my report.
I just want to make sure, a couple of things before we leave your report. Does anybody have any other questions about the elementary enrollment? I know even myself was just trying to scan it over to make sure I didn't have any glaring questions. So just take a minute. Does anybody have any questions?
Looks like we only have one red.
Yeah. Correct. We have one. Yep, one section.
One red.
That's over guidelines by a student.
How has the kindergarten continued to come in? I mean, we know we got a bunch of students earlier than we did in the past. Has it continued to trickle in per usual, or?
Yes, I think we experienced what I would describe as a surge.
Okay.
Right? Because we had more interest all at once, which caused us to have to have conversations a little bit more sooner and compacted compared to more of a spread-out flow and registration process. However, since we addressed some of those initial section sizes, we added the sections in order to have the sheet look the way it does today to have our kindergarten sections within guidelines. It's been more steady now, and I think the surge has ended. Now, again, anything can happen over the next few weeks, because throughout the summer months, summer is a good time that families do decide to make, you know, moves. And we will continue to register students that come, but I think we're in really good shape with the decisions we made a little earlier than normal, but I think we're ending up with a similar result to past years.
Have we ever had a singleton class of dual language? Am I reading it correct? There's one class for first grade?
Hey, Rosalyn, I was going to ask the same question.
Okay, yeah, I don't remember us having that.
From a historical perspective, have we ever?
Did something happen?
Have we ever had that?
Not in my tent here, but then something I can do a little bit of investigating on. That'd be good.
Let us take a look.
My guess is there's an error there.
Okay, we'll take a look at dual language at Rosalyn in first grade.
Because Rosalyn has four kindergarten classes right now?
Yes. Yeah, we'll take a look at it. Well, I'll put an update in the weekly. Yeah.
Any other questions? I guess, can we just do one more round of applause for Dr. Bynne?
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your trust. It has been an honor and privilege to serve this community and the students and staff here. And really, it's great being able to work with all of you. Thank you so much.
Really appreciate your time and dedication and the recognition that we've gotten, you know, in your last year or two, but all along the way. I mean, I've worked with three, I think, business, school business officials. Now I'll be working my fourth. But I just have really appreciated the time and the dedication that you've put in.
Thank you. It's easy to do here in Barrington. This is a great place. It's really special here. Thank you.
I agree. It's no small feat what you've taught me about finance. And I remember you were one of the first people I met with when I was brought onto the Board, and that was a large task. We had, it was Aaron and I, and I just really appreciate all the knowledge you've passed on in addition to all the amazing work you've done.
And keep teaching, right? Keep teaching, because I think the whole state has benefited from a lot of what you've done as well.
Thank you. Thank you, I will.
All right. I'm sure we'll spend a few minutes with you after the meeting as well. Okay, any questions on informational reports? All right, how about board committee reports? I think we had two this week, right?
Katie, you want to talk or say?
Oh, go ahead, Leah. Sorry, I was not.
No. So facilities met yesterday, and we had an update about solar. Some of you might be wondering and curious, because we had had an update a while ago, but it's moving forward behind the scenes. And the whole board and the community will get an update at our next meeting. But what's going on is that we are continuing to pursue solar, putting panels on top of some of our buildings, the ones that are going to be appropriate. And there is a design-build process. It's a little bit different than what we usually do when we get bids. But we worked with Ted, I'm going to say his name wrong, Messicas of Themes Architecture, and he helped us develop a request for proposal and review the proposals. And ultimately, Performance Services has been identified as the top choice due to their extensive experience with K through 12 roof mount solar installations with schools. So we're going to continue working towards that, and we will have a full update at the next meeting, and also talking about rebates from the state and how it's more beneficial in our situation to purchase rather than lease. So, next meeting. Looking forward to making some more decisions.
And then Finance Committee met. So I guess we'll be busy next meeting also, because we talked about what we're going to be talking about at our next board meeting. So our one big agenda item was tentative budget. Since we have a new school year coming, that means we need to get working on our budget for the '24-'25 school year. And we're projecting, because of strong interest rates, tentative budget, we're looking at about a $1.8 million surplus. So that was higher than what we were expecting, but that's good news. Keep our fingers crossed on that. This will be the last year that ESAR funds will be included, and we're down to just a paltry amount. We've, you know, from COVID, we've been able to use them over the last three years, and this is the last year by the end of September we have to have them all allocated. The audit is in process, and as everyone knows, it goes into the fall before we get a final report. But going back to our tentative budget, so we'll share, obviously, with the Board before our next meeting. The budget presentation will be on August 13th, and then ultimately, after the process that we go through, on September 17th, we'll be approving our final budget. One of our debate items that we're going to have to, you know, put our heads together about is whether we're going to issue DCEB or not. We've had the luck of, luck maybe is not the right word, but the pleasure of the last two years not having to issue DCEB, which is just an additional way of funding. But as we look at capital projects and we start thinking about the needs of our schools, right now, DCEB is baked into the tentative budget, and that's, you know, something that we're all going to want to talk about. So just kind of be prepared for that discussion, and as I say, the presentation is the next meeting. So we'll look forward to that, so we can really dig into this.
There's traumatic thunder behind our skin.
Okay, any other committee reports? We do actually have a referendum advisory committee meeting coming up later this week as well.
Thursday.
I should have mentioned that. So there will be a preparation meeting tomorrow. And we'll have that on Thursday. All right, to move into the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? I'll read through everything that we have on the consent agenda. We have minutes from July 18th, both open and closed. We have the following finance reports, June reports for wage and payroll, treasurer, treasury, and revenues and expenditures, and the July bill list report. We have a revised personnel report. And we have the Salem United Methodist Church parking agreement. Having read through all those, any questions? The parking agreement is something we do every year annually. We purchase or lease the spaces at the Salem church in town to help with parking for our teachers during the week.
For Hoff Street. It's basically the same as last year's, right?
Yep, that's correct.
All right, so thank you to Salem for that, for allowing us to do that. All right, why don't we do a roll call?
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Let's go into our action items. The first one, do we have a motion to approve the mini bus lease?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, do you want to give us a quick overview? It's pretty straightforward, the write-up, but?
Yeah, the current lease for our mini buses expires next week. And so this puts us in a position to maintain our mini buses. And so the recommendation is outlined with the attachment of looking to purchase new mini buses. Is there anything to add?
Yeah, the lease actually expired June 30th.
Oh.
So we have been relying on BTC to assist us with this. So we're getting a lot of requests for our mini buses. But this is a little bit new to us that we're purchasing the buses instead of leasing them. But we think we'll get a long life cycle out of them and we'll be able to use them longer than we have been leasing.
And any leaves on the new bus arrivals? Any hints when they may show up?
Fingers crossed for August.
And I believe I read, do we have a motion to approve the lease as presented? So whoever, whoever, are you okay to change it to the purchase instead of the word lease?
It is a lease to own.
It's a lease to own, okay, so it is still correct. Okay, sorry.
And this would be approving us to now move forward with engaging in the lease to own. Since we don't have the buses, we haven't drafted paperwork yet.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the BHS athletic program donation agreements?
So moved.
Second. Okay, anything you want to say about that?
So our advertising policy provides opportunities to look to utilizing advertising throughout the district. We have a number of agreements that are in place in various areas. The agreement tonight is just adding to advertising that would be located out at the Field of Dreams location from one of our local providers. Dave, anything to add?
It's a windscreen and we're thankful for the interest and support from the Illinois Golden Joint Institute.
So does the donor provide the windscreen or do they?
It's built in on the cost of the donation.
Gotcha, okay.
And or you might remember just recently, there was a change that we did with the new agreement for someone who had been with us, switched companies and wanted to switch the windscreen. We did a new agreement, but she paid for a replacement windscreen. So if there was a replacement for some reason over the life of it, our partner would pay for that. But it's included in the cost upfront.
Makes sense. Thanks for that reminder. All right, let's do a roll call.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the BHS TV equipment lease?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I'm trying to remember. This is not something we do every year. It's every time the lease comes up. So is there anything more that anybody has any questions about that? This is all related to BHS TV. As a reminder, we purchase or lease slightly different computers than we do for the rest of the students for these classes. Anything else I should say about?
Just.
It's grant funded.
It's grant.
Yeah.
And it's grant funded.
Specialized computers that meet the curricular and instructional needs in that program. That's why it's a kind of a one-off from our other purchasing agreements.
Yep. All right, any other questions? Let's do a roll call.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Last action item, do we have a motion to declare the property surplus and authorize its sale or disposal?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have over, probably over a thousand items here that are on this surplus list. Is there any other questions?
I'm just wondering, most, not most of the items, but most of the entries have to do with gymnastics. Is this because we don't have competitive gymnastics meets at Barrington? Or do we just have all new equipment and this is the old stuff?
It's that we are not doing the meets at Barrington.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So they're not in use.
Actually, that was the majority of the line items, but the majority of the items are all related to digital and analog phones.
Uh huh.
Why aren't we keeping those?
I was hoping Dave got to go home with one of those.
We're all 957.
Or maybe 957.
Yeah, and you can call me on them anytime you've got questions.
That's your door prize. That's your door prize for, you know, all the time you put in.
Out of curiosity, with the gymnastics equipment, if it's still usable, are we donating it?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
All of it?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. All right, let's do a roll call.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So let's move on into our discussion items. First up is attendance.
Yeah, I'd like to invite Josh Carpenter and Zach Ernst up to the front table. They're going to provide a presentation this evening on our attendance, both our efforts as well as some of our current attendance information. The board may recall, I did discuss this even before the start of school last year, that attendance was an area that we were going to focus on and make sure that we had steps in place to have our students attend regularly and put measures in place to work with families that maybe attendance was not occurring on a regular basis. So with that, I'll turn it over to Josh and Zach.
Thank you, Dr. Winkelman, and thank you to the Board of Education for providing this opportunity to present information on our attendance work over the course of the last year and also thinking ahead to this year. Improving attendance, chronic absenteeism, and chronic truancy, again, to Dr. Winkelman's point, continues to be a priority focus in Barrington 220. And in fact, in August of 2023, Dr. Winkelman shared a letter with our community that emphasized the importance of daily school attendance and our commitment to supporting students and families. A few quotes from Dr. Winkelman's message are on the screen. The first quote is Barrington 220 values student attendance. For a student to have a successful experience, a student must be present in class. Any absence from school is a missed learning opportunity for your child. And the second quote that I pulled from that message from Dr. Winkelman is attending school regularly helps students feel better about school and also about themselves. This next slide also highlights that this is not, challenges related to attendance and daily school attendance is not only a Barrington 220 issue, it's a national challenge. And a couple of screen grabs that you'll see on the screen from national publications that really highlights that many, if not all, all school districts are really wrestling with the challenges related to daily school attendance. We have four outcomes for the presentation this evening. I will provide you with the 2324 school year attendance data. We'll share some operational attendance actions that we took during 2324 to achieve some of the positive results that we did see within the data. We'll share some student and family engagement actions that we took in 2324. And we'll also talk about next steps that we're planning for 2425.
Okay, so I have three different types of attendance data that I'm going to be sharing tonight. We're going to go over student attendance, chronic absenteeism, and chronic truancy data as it relates to our attendance from last year, and then talk through some of those actions that were taken operationally and then related to engagement. So attendance definitions can sometimes get a little bit murky. So as I go through each of the different types of data, I'll define them. And so the first one we're going to talk about tonight is student attendance, which is the average daily percentage of District 220 students attending school. So that's basically how many of our District 220 students show up on a daily basis. Okay? And so when we look here, we're looking at student attendance over time. And when looking at student attendance over the years, we see a slight increase in attendance from 23 to 24 and look to continue to increase this percentage closer to the 2019 school year with our attendance actions moving forward. So we had that near 97% attendance in 2019. And we're aiming to get back there with some of our actions. But again, moving in the right direction from the previous year compared to last year. Another important thing to note with all of the data that I'm sharing for 2024 data, this is all district generated data. So the data may have some slight differences upon the release of the Illinois Report Card based on how the state calculates the percentages and things. But this will be a very close percentage upon that release, to that release, sorry. So we have next chronic absenteeism, which is defined as students who miss 10% of school days within an academic year with or without a valid excuse. And the important part there is that's with or without a valid excuse. So contextually, that's a student being absent for 18 or more school days within an academic year would be considered chronically absent. And so here we're looking at chronic absenteeism over time. And I think it's a pretty apparent celebration that we see. We have seen a 5% decrease in our chronic absenteeism percentage from 23 to 24. We do acknowledge we have some, still have some work to do to return to pre-pandemic percentages. But we will continue to make efforts to decrease this percentage further in the coming school year. Then the last type of data, attendance-related data we're going to look at is chronic truancy, which is defined as students who miss 5% of school days within an academic year. And this is solely without a valid excuse. Okay, so again, to contextualize this, that would mean a student has nine or more unexcused absences within an academic year. So we are also encouraged to see a decrease in our chronic truancy percentage moving from 8.9% in 2023 to 7.8% this past year in 2024. Data from prior to 2021 is not displayed as the state reporting intruancy rules were changed by the state in 2021. So similar to chronic absenteeism, we aim to decrease this percentage further with targeted actions tied to attendance in the coming school year. So now we're going to take a look at absenteeism and truancy by school. Okay, so you're looking at, this is a table including chronic absenteeism and chronic truancy percentages for each of our schools in District 220. You will notice that privately placed students are part of this attendance data. This is important to contextualize as we do not maintain or control attendance policies, procedures, or actions at our private placement sites. However, we do aim to partner with these facilities to better support this population of our students to help improve attendance. So moving forward. In this table, we're looking at a two-year comparison of chronic absenteeism data. So another major celebration is that across all schools in Barrington 220, there were no increases in chronic absenteeism. And in fact, a decrease is observed in almost every school, which is a huge celebration on account of all the work that was done. And similarly, we have a chance to look at a two-year comparison, but now it's for chronic truancy on this slide. Again, the majority of schools show a decrease in chronic truancy from the 2223 and compared to school years compared to the 2324 school year. So now that we've looked at the data, I'd like to discuss the actions we've taken tied to attendance that have helped to make the data actionable. As a district, we have taken a two-pronged approach to help improve overall attendance data in Barrington. The first prong is operational in nature. So I've included four of the major operational actions we've taken as a district to help improve attendance. So first, we increased communication and examination of District 220 attendance policies, procedures, and expectations. So really looking at making sure with the turnover in our district and our staff that everybody is aware of our attendance policies, procedures, to ensure consistency across our buildings. Second, we developed a digital tool to help visualize and monitor attendance. Essentially, this gave building administrators and staff an opportunity to get a day-by-day look at global building attendance. But this tool also drilled down to individual student attendance in a very user-friendly way to be able to analyze who are your chronically absent, chronically truant students. So again, shortened the gap in response time. We had a daily updated tool to be able to analyze that data. Third, we organized and identified reasons for absences within our systems and schools. So as you can imagine, there can be many reasons that kids are absent from school. And what we wanted to do is streamline and make sure we are coding our absences consistently and efficiently across all of our schools so that when we look at attendance data, it's comparing apples to apples. So we spent some time doing that this year. And then the fourth operational bullet here is we conducted attendance audits and observations as a system of checks and balances to help ensure and improve fidelity of attendance systems. And another aspect, there's many processes and procedures tied to attendance and reporting attendance. These audits went in to kind of monitor our systems to see what was working, what wasn't, what was clunky, what maybe needed to become more efficient. And so these audits were conducted to do that analysis periodically throughout the year. So the second prong of our attendance improvement plan was aimed at increasing student and family engagement. And as educators, we know that one of the most powerful ways to improve attendance is ensuring that we make school a place students want to be, right? And so if we look at attendance as an art and a science, the science is maybe more of those operational strategies, the art being a lot of the family and student engagement. And so we focused our efforts kind of in three big areas this year. The first being is that we communicated to families and students about the importance of attendance. And this started with Dr. Winkelman, starting from a global level, reporting out to all of the families in his communications about the importance of attendance. But this trickled down from building principles, including it in monthly school newsletters, embedding research and articles to the school communities about the importance of attendance, all the way down to teachers stressing the importance in their weekly newsletters and connecting with parents as a way to help stress the importance of getting kids to school. Second, we increased communication and relationship building between staff and chronically absent students. So we wanted to make sure that across our schools, we knew who the students at an individual level were that were chronically absent and/or chronically truant. And we wanted to connect with them, build relationships, try and not make it a punitive outreach, but more of a information-seeking outreach in figuring out how we can better support students and families, remove some of the barriers. families, remove some of the barriers that may have been preventing their students from getting to school. And then the third was utilizing building administration and wellness staff as a more intensive support for families in need of attendance-related interventions. And so as I've been talking with principals, an added layer this year was for students that were chronically absent or chronically truant, you had building principals calling home, and assistant principals and counselors actually picking up the phone and making personal phone calls to families and saying, hey, you know, not why weren't you at school? This is a problem, but also really ensuring that, hey, we missed fill-in-the-blank today at school, or we've been missing them. Are there things that we can do to help get your child to school? And so that personal touch from an administrative lens goes a long way in terms of helping families feel like your kids are wanted at school, and kids to feel like they're wanted at school. So again, another engagement strategy that was taken. So obviously, we want to keep the momentum going, going into this next school year. And so we are want to make sure and prioritize attendance going into next year as we still have some work to do at improving our attendance. And I've included here some of the next steps that we hope to carry into the 2425 school year related to attendance. The first is continuing to streamline and optimize attendance policies and procedures across schools, a little bit more operational in nature. Second, analyze attendance trends across student groups and grade levels, really diving into the data and the trends and saying, are there certain student groups, ages, grades that tend to be missing more, more than others? And if so, what can we do about that? Three, increase opportunities to connect with students and families to directly support our chronically absent and chronically truant students. Again, this is that personal touch. As you can imagine, there's lots of absences within a school year in a district of our size, but building in very systematic structures that allow for personal engagement with families of students who are chronically absent and truant is something that we want to continue to do and build into our attendance beliefs and strategies moving forward. And then fourth, this kind of connects to Framework 220 and everything that Barrington 220 is really about, and it connects back to when students want to be at school and feel like they're wanted to be at school, that they're going to show up, right? And we know that continuing to provide unique learning opportunities and experiences that help make all Barrington schools a place students want to be is something we seek to do, and being innovative and personalizing learning and looking for ways and finding out the reasons from students. Why is it that you may not want to come to school? What are the things you want to be learning? I think, you know, you think about the GEM program and being able to reach students that in a way that is very different, but very realistic to what they're going to see in real life, looking for these opportunities to help improve attendance as well is something that we believe and want to continue into next year. So that kind of concludes the formal presentation, but wanted to open it up for any questions that you guys might have as well.
Are other districts doing some of these same things, or are we kind of leading, figuring it out? Because this is, this is not just our problem, right? Everyone's having this problem, other districts.
Yeah, as I attend superintendent meetings locally as well as nationally, you're exactly right, Leah, this is something that everybody is reacting to and responding, because as you saw in one of the early slides, I mean, big jumps nationally. Like, we saw an increase, but some, you know, school districts approaching a third of your students not attending. I think it was 28% was some of the figures that were released last spring, this past March. And so yes, I think there's a variety of approaches that are taking place throughout schools, some similar to us. I will say that, you know, we've tried to have a blend of adjusting and making sure we have really good systems in place, making sure the people that have the information at the building level on a regular basis is a strategy that I don't know if everyone's doing, but it was something we did in-house by creating those visualizations that are attached to our data sets. So immediately, as a, as a rollover occurs for attendance in our data warehouse, the principal or counselor can run that report the next day, right? So I can't speak to everybody doing that, but that was an intentional step we took. I think the other thing that we're doing that other districts may be doing, but we were very clear about, something that Zach and Josh spoke to, we want to understand the barriers, and we want to be supportive. It's not the, you know, the old school, we're going to send the truancy officer, you know, to go pick you up. Like, no, like, we, we wanted to make sure that we have good systems in place, and can we approach this that we want you at school, we miss you when you're not here, you're, you're missing out on those learning opportunities, and how can we help support and identify maybe some things that we're not aware of by partnering with our families? So it's a variety of things that are occurring, and you know, as indicated, we're going to introduce a few new things next year to continue to get that trend to be more similar to maybe our, our attendance numbers before the pandemic, and kind of get back to those, those attendance rates. Because again, I mean, I find this, it's so valuable, because I think there's a possible misperception of, you know, I can access my assignments remotely, I can, you know, get my, you know, content digitally and so forth. But that is not the same as being able to be in the classroom and learn from your peers and have conversations with your teacher and maybe not only understand things and develop knowledge and skills, but also address any misperceptions. Because you could be sitting at home with all the information, and you may be interpreting it incorrectly and so forth. So there's just a lot to this that, you know, I think the, you know, the important piece of this is making sure that our classrooms and the programs and the instruction cannot be replaced and cannot, cannot be as effective when you're receiving that independently and so forth. So just trying to reinforce that, that mindset.
So on that note, it's encouraging to see improvement, however, in chronic truancy, we did have three grade schools where it went up, and honestly, the truancy seems to alarm me a little bit more because there's without an excuse. But so as you reached out to these families, was there like an overwhelm, was there, did you have a trend in what you heard when you, when speaking to, with these families? I mean, is there?
I don't know if there was a trend in what we heard. I think, you know, I worry if we had not taken the steps, because the steps were applied at all schools. You know, I worry, would we have seen more schools that would have seen attendance numbers heading the wrong way? And that's something I have talked to the superintendents that are seeing their numbers rise, let alone stay at a higher rate. So these are the schools that next year we're going to target even more so, and try to work with those individual families on a case-by-case basis to try to make sure all of our schools are seeing decreases, especially those without, without a reason submitted.
Right, and, because I fully hear you on thinking that kids thinking they can do their work from home, but that seems more of a middle school, high school thing to me than a grade school. So that's why I find it a little bit more alarming.
I agree. I thought that was interesting, too. I was kind of surprised.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, without a valid excuse, making sure, it really goes to, you don't want to assume, right, why a child isn't missing school? And so that's, I think, what we have to kind of start to dig into more, which is, what are the systems we have to figure out the reasons? Or what is the process or procedure to contact families, right? And, and figure out, okay, why are, why isn't your child here? Or are you just taking them out for a vacation? Is that the best, you know, some of those things? And won't avoid all of those, but those are things that are good information to know when we start getting into, you know, that world.
So, okay, because with my kids, I, so without excuses, literally, they did not go onto the portal and put that they're, there's just no information.
Correct. So on the portal, they ask for, why is your child absent today?
Correct, yeah.
So it's not just a matter of calling in and saying, you know, Leah's not going to be in school tomorrow, I'm Mrs., sorry, goodbye, or whatever. I mean, you have to actually have a reason.
Yes.
I mean, you can say whatever you want.
Okay.
Self-reported.
Yeah, and then, and then like a mental health day is, that's considered excused? I mean, students get mental health days, right? Isn't that now part of the lingo, or?
So part of the challenge that we're reacting to is that, you know, mental health days are permissible, right? And that is in the data, right? So we have mechanisms in place, though, that if we notice that you are taking several mental health days or consecutive mental health days, that's another way that our visualizations and that data set give us the ability to say, whoa, whoa, maybe there is something going on.
It's a red flag.
A little bit more intense, that why are you taking several mental health days in a row? And that's where our counselors come in to, you know, it's not just a, I'm stressed or overwhelmed today, and I haven't felt that way for a month, and then, you know, maybe, you know, several weeks go by, but when we see trends of like, you're taking several in a row, is there, is there an urgent matter where maybe we need to intervene sooner?
And then I want to be careful, because I'm going to ask a question that I don't know the answer to, and I'm afraid that maybe I should be careful. I'm not casting any aspersions, but I'm really concerned about the differences between elementary schools. I mean, when you look at the data, how there could be such a difference when we look at chronic absence or, or truancy. You know, is it possible that maybe data collection isn't as consistent? And again, I'm not, I'm not casting aspersions or accusing, but it just seems like there's some significant number differences. And do you have any hypotheses about, you know, how to attribute that? You know, how you can have a school like Huff, and I, I don't want to call the names, but 2.9, and then Barbara Rose, 11.4, I just picked those two, I'm not, you know? That's a huge difference in terms of, you know, chronic truancy. So do you have any hypotheses why or how, or?
So yes, and we're working closely with the building principals, who will put that into their school improvement efforts. So some of those school improvement plans may look a little different when Zach and Josh were sitting down with our principals to develop those plans, but Zach, you're as close to it, anything to add there?
Yeah, you know, we really talk about, that's one of the things from the operational side, like that marries the operational and the engagement aspect of it, because we really have to figure out what is the issue, right? Is it a systems, a lack of consistency, consistency in reporting? You can't point your finger to it yet, but I think working with building principals to say, hey, it's, it's important that you know the percentages and the numbers, you know who the kids are, we have a way to get that information, so that we do have an answer for that, right? And I think that's conversations we're, we're having with principals on a regular basis, and as we begin talking about school improvement planning, does it fit within a school improvement plan or a principal's priority, you know, personal goals, right, of saying, this is a responsibility we want to take on and understand? So I think that's a conversation we begin to have right about now, this time of year in the summer, as we move forward into next year.
And I think this is maybe what Katie was asking, too, as far as like, if you see trends and so forth, you know, I think that vacation mindset, sometimes it's reported, sometimes it's not, that may be a trend we see at some schools, where then we would work with the principal to maybe intervene and really work on that type of topic at their school to, to have more consistency across our elementary schools. And, and other trends we may see, there may be other things that at a particular school site are impacting or creating a barrier to school. And so it's going to be a blend of us having a system approach, but then also customizing it by working with our principals for each building.
I can give a contextual example, when I was at Huff as the principal, you do run into even another, you have students that have regular sporting events because of the teams they play on, they, they miss a, miss a consistent day of one or two days a month because of the team that they're playing on or the event that they're in. And so that's an example of one, we want to know those things as facts, but you know, that's an example of what you might run into as well, so.
And if you have a school that has a high participation rate in those type of activities, you may see some numbers that look different. And that's where, again, we have to, we have to personalize this for each school based on what they're seeing in their numbers, and that comes through in those conversations.
Well, and I will say, because I've forgotten at times, you do get a phone call, and it's very helpful, and so I guess that alarms me a little bit that then, especially at the high school, because it's like, if you do not come and give us an excuse as to why you're not here. So I find it fascinating that there's still that many come reported, but.
Well, I think talking to high school parents, understanding that the definition is absences with or without an excuse is the way this number is structured, and that that's a number that's universal. We're not just doing this randomly as Barrington 220. And, and so parents are like, well, my child was sick, my child broke their leg, my child had this, and so it's, you know, I'm feeling that the child was justifiably absent, even though if they had 10 of them, they were still chronically absent, even though they were excused. So that's kind of an interesting view that's not clear when, when you start talking to people about it. But I think the, an important fact is that it's the same number, the same measurement as it was 10 years ago, and we're in a very different place right now. There were as many children breaking their legs or being sick, you know, 10 years ago, but somehow there's, there's a big increase in this chronic absenteeism. So to get to the bottom of it is important.
And I think the truancy number helps, because that's unexcused. So, you know, whereas the, you know, chronic absence could be excused or unexcused, the truancy is, these are people who have no, you know, are, it's not a mental health day, it's not a broken leg, it's, you know, so.
Stitching.
Stitching, yeah, right.
Well, it could be those things. That's why the follow-up is so important to, to really appreciate that, that we're personalizing and reaching out to find out, make sure that.
Well, and to explain the value of going to school.
I mean, it's heartening to see the numbers are improving, and as you say, we have a lot of room to continue that improvement, but I'm glad to see that from, you know, 23 to 24, things have gotten better, which is great.
Absolutely.
We just have to keep it up.
We continue, yeah, we want to keep pushing along in the right direction.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's go, move on to our Build 220 update. Five different people coming forward.
So we don't have too much of an update, so if you're okay of us sort of speaking from here, is that?
Yeah.
Is that all right?
Perfectly fine.
Okay, so we came to you in May and shared a $6 million number. $3 million of that was of interest earnings, and as you may remember, we will not have a final number on that $3 million until all the money has been spent and our partners, PMA, are able to help us through the arbitrage and know what is it that we need to send back to the federal government. So that's, at this point, still $3 million.
And interest rates have been pretty stable from our last projection, so we're not seeing that to likely change a lot. But ultimately, the IRS decides exactly how much it is. So we'll, we'll work with PMA, but the IRS tells us what we get to keep and what they're going to take. We're feeling good about the three million.
We are. I reached out to PMA since our last meeting, and they said, no changes as of right now. The second piece of that $3 million was committed but unspent funds, and we mentioned included in what we had committed was contingency dollars for the work that's currently happening at the high school. So we're about halfway through contin, or contingency, we're about halfway through construction for the summer, and we're also about halfway through contingency. So the larger items of what we would be spending on contingency, they're going to happen earlier in the construction process, so we've likely spent for the big items that might come up, but there will likely also be more contingency to spend. So we are still feeling confident about the $3 million, and then if there is additional contingency remaining, we're thinking between 150 and 250, 100,000, so 150,000 to 250,000. So that 3 million is not likely to change significantly.
That's correct.
Very good. We also promised updated pricing on two items, which you have in the next agenda item, but I can speak very briefly to that if you'd like. One was AC at the VHS main GEM, so we have a price of $3.5 million for a roof mount air conditioning system.
And that includes fixing the roof so that it can handle the roof mount or whatever? It sounds like we need to do a little work to get it up to code, right? So that includes that.
Yeah.
Okay. So we had, couldn't afford this before because of the extra cost, right?
That's correct.
We considered it in 20, in the 2020 referendum, but it became cost prohibitive.
Right. Some of this is a challenge. Some of this is a challenge as you start to bid out certain items, you're looking where your spend is, and prospectively, we did not feel this was something that we were able to, to do.
Right.
We're now sitting in this, in a spot that's a little bit different, hence the conversations the board has been having on, on this, what the priorities are.
And then the VHS applied arts classrooms was the other item that we had discussed, and we have a pre-design per square foot solution that's been estimated at 3.3 million.
Okay, that's specific to those physics labs.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes, but, and this is, this is one where, where we just want to qualify it a little bit. You know, as Sarah said, it's, it's a, it's a pre-design per square foot estimate. Because we didn't invest and, you know, have the time and weren't able to invest the funds to actually build out the designs to get a firm, here's what it looks like for this exact space with the fit and finish that we're doing and, and exactly what's going on here, then we had to do more refined per square foot estimates. So, we think this is a good number, and we think that the work can be done, that we want done for these estimates. But Board, please understand, this isn't where we've built out the drawings and we've gotten quotes and, and that's what we're able to deliver to you, there just wasn't time to be able to do that.
Right. Okay, that's fair.
Can I ask a quick question in conjunction with that? Because I don't remember. I know the playground that we replaced for the K-Lab was used by the physics department for experiments and such. Is that still capable of doing that in its new form?
I can answer that. So, we did work with the physics department and we took all of the information from their curriculum and all of the movements that need to take place in that playground, and all of that has been incorporated in the playground. So, awesome. Thank you.
Excellent. Sounds like a great playground.
Yes.
I think we have field trips.
Yeah, I think we have.
I think so, too.
Series of field trips.
There you go.
Yeah.
Well, I think that that information is good, and I think it's very informative to lead to our next discussion item if we're ready to go there.
Correct.
I think so.
All right, so let's talk about the referendum.
All right, so I'd like to.
Potential referendum, I guess.
Correct. I'd like to invite our, our team up to the table.
Yay.
From a process standpoint, I'm going to lead or attempt to make a lot of conversations about as linear of an explanation as I can to start. And then, certainly, as I mentioned at the last meeting, this, this is a team process, that's why the, the team is here and we're prepared to answer questions the board may have and, and respond as, as a team as well. So, maybe to start, a little bit of explanation, right? So, the summer months provide an opportunity for administration and the board to work together to really try to determine and arrive at a referendum, a potential referendum question. So, at the first summer meeting, the June 4th meeting, we received an update from E.O. Sullivan on our community survey results, and we also heard from our referendum advisory committee that night. And from the June 4th meeting, the recommendation was to look to follow the process that the board has committed to every step of the way of having a community-driven plan for our referendum. And the response of the community, including the referendum advisor committee, was to, there was support by the community for option three, but with, you know, an expectation or advice to look to try to accomplish the things included in option three, but try to make it more affordable and reduce the tax, additional tax impact on, on the community. So, that was June 4th, June 18th, I thought, our last meeting, we had a great, robust conversation where we really then took that advice and feedback and looked at four potential scenarios, you know, that evening. And from that discussion, the board provided the administration with some parameters to continue to utilize that option three, but really look at the projects and continue to try to look for ways to make the referendum question more affordable and using the resources of, that were just mentioned, of the Build 220 dollars as well as a grant reimbursement. So, just to kind of provide a little bit of explanation to the documents that were attached to the weekly on Thursday, but also you have printed copies in front of you this evening, which I think will help with the discussion tonight. So, one document is just, again, the project list and descriptions of the projects that are included in option three. We then also have a table, colored table, which provides the administrative recommendation that our team plus Steve McWilliams is not able to be here tonight, but Steve was included in all the conversations over the last five weeks since our last meeting on June 18th. So, you have the administrative recommendation. And then, there have been a lot of versions that we've looked at of visuals that coincide with the projects in option three. And so, we felt it was a good time to update the visuals that really coincide and align with where the conversations have evolved over the last several months. So, you have a, a fresh set of floor plans and visuals with a new key that really indicates the projects that we're going to discuss tonight. All right, so any questions on the materials or resources that are in front of you? Because I think the next step then is I will provide a little bit more context to the administrative recommendation.
Are you going to, as part of that, are you going to walk us through the?
Yes.
Okay, because there's a couple changes in here.
Yeah. So, let's stay with the visual. So, this visual, it does provide all of the projects that we've been discussing. So, we did not start to remove any projects. This, this visualization is all of the projects, even though our recommendation may not include everything on the sheet, but coming into tonight, we wanted to make sure we had all of the different projects represented. So, a couple of things that you will notice that are new on the sheet, we had some conversations, even starting at the last meeting, that we were trying to describe CTE and production shop, different applied arts, what those terms mean. So, we took the feedback from the last meeting, and you'll see some new naming conventions on the sheet. So, for example, the West Edition, which is that small, new building addition onto the high school just outside of the fine arts classrooms and the current auditorium. What that space would be intended for is we've changed that to really convey its purpose would be a larger space, career pathways, adding additional, meeting our current needs as well as adding additional instructional space for career pathways, which could be a combination of fine arts, applied arts, CTE, any of those different programming options. We also, the space outside of that, that creates the connection link between the current auditorium and, as depicted here, the potential future music rooms, really using that space as an opportunity to display and have additional gallery space, which was noted as one of the areas in that courtyard renovation, that's part of the fine arts programming enhancements. And we also want to make sure that we were calling it the same and describing it in the same way that we've added other spaces throughout the district. So, you'll notice that collaborative workspace is now part of the naming there rather than lobby, because really what we hope is that as we have done construction throughout the district, really looking at how do we maximize our spaces and make sure that every space potentially could be a learning space? And so, if you can envision this, this connection, it would be very similar to the connections we've built at our two middle schools, where we've got a space that connects the new addition with flexible learning spaces. However, it is not like a traditional hallway. It can serve as a hallway when kids need to walk through that space between passing period and classes, but it can also serve as a space for students to gather, small groups, learning space and so forth. We envision this connection link here would also be considered and outfitted to be a collaborative workspace. Moving from left to right, we've also renamed the current space that's shared by both our woods courses as well as the scene and construction production that occurs, calling that a makerspace. Again, this is building on, our district has really tried to take a stance of stop calling spaces by course name, but really tried to denote what maybe takes place there, making it more flexible and able to move different programming in and out. So, a makerspace more accurately fit what would be occurring in that, in that space. And then, you'll notice along the, the side with the new auditorium addition noted in that dark gray, calling those the steam labs, so that would be renovation of the current, potentially current orchestra and choir rooms. And then, moving to the auditorium itself, I think some of the feedback we received from the community during the referendum advisory committee and even at the board table was really trying to make sure that we understand what is involved with the new auditorium. And so, want to be clear that the new auditorium that is proposed in option three that we've been discussing would entail 840 seats, and that would be a combination of the main floor that's on the first sheet in front of you, plus the upstairs balcony seats, which I believe is around 125 seats. So, 840 seats as a combination between the main floor and the auditorium. And so, I want to make sure we start to just update these to really reflect the, the types of projects in a more accurate way, as well as conveying additional information, just to clear up any misunderstandings that may exist. Anything I can answer from the new visuals that are in front of you as far as the floor plans and the projects that maybe I didn't touch upon?
Where does the storage go? I'm looking at the old one, and now it's steam labs, and before it was storage and ensemble.
So, you'll, you'll notice it's now steam labs and storage, is that what you mean?
Oh, well, there's less, there's a lot less storage, it looks like.
It was all listed, a lot of it was listed as storage before.
They have a bunch of other places.
But we always talked about those as being steam rooms, although this wasn't updated is, I think, part of the issue there, Leah, but.
But there's storage like four other places.
Yeah.
So, there's enough. Okay.
My understa-
Go ahead.
My understanding is there's more storage for all the areas.
Like it's area-specific. Spread out.
More storage. Okay. All right, just looking at the two different.
No, that's a good question.
Well, and there's less practice rooms, too, unless they went somewhere that I'm not finding them. They were in the place that's now makerspace, had some practice rooms in addition to the practice rooms that are by the steam labs and the main lobby. There were, there were.
There are less.
There's less.
Depicted, for sure.
There's like six less.
I think one of the things that we talked about was down on the lower level, there's the green room slash multipurpose room.
Uh-huh.
And one of the things that we talked about in fine arts and we've talked about on the advisory committee is that would be where some of the larger ensembles could rehearse, you know, like the madrigals or the, you know, jazz quartets, something like that, where currently they're sort of crammed in these tiny rooms, and it would open it up to, to a larger practice room downstairs that could also be used as a green room or other spaces.
Is this little area, the gallery collaborative, is this closed off from like, is this really this, or is this open here?
So, it's closed off. So, that's, it's a new addition that helps connect the outside, you know, like those doors to the current lobby area.
Yeah.
That's all enclosed now, and it's considered gallery and collaborative workspace.
But that is how you.
Oh, it's that other entrance that comes in from the back?
Yep.
Gotcha. Yeah. But you would still access group pathways through there as well, right? I mean, so it's, it's closed off from those spaces, but it would still, there would still be access to group pathways there. I'm assuming the band room would only be through this other hallway.
Correct. So, it's actually like 1755 additional square footage.
It's just like a funky space.
Yeah.
So, as I was studying the, like, the auditorium, I thank you for adding the number of seats because I think there was confusion.
Sure.
On that, so I think in my head, it's going to be about the same size in number of seats that we have today, except we've added a balcony, is essentially the big difference. But it's going to be a bigger space because there's going to be more space per seat.
Definitely more room, more legroom. We're currently 704.
Okay. So, it's even bigger.
So, we're adding about 140.
It's larger.
I'm talking about the main floor versus the, the balcony would add the additional.
One thing I really like about that is that, you know, we definitely will fill it with the 840 for a number of events, but there's also several things we do both in fine arts for the community, for other areas of the school and the district where it's not, you know, might be 400 or 500 people, where I've seen other schools that have balconies, like, close the balcony off.
Yeah.
So, it's a little more.
Intimate.
Intimate, a little, you know, we have the options to be even a little smaller in the number of seats for like a smaller event, or to open up the balcony and have a, you know, significantly larger number of seats, so.
And just.
I like that flexibility.
Just keep in mind, this is pre-designed, so this is possibly available depending on where the design lands, so that's why it's approximately 840 seats, but.
But we've got, I mean, we've got a pretty good idea.
Yes, yeah.
It's going to be, it's going to meet our objective of fitting a full class.
Yes.
Graduating class in, in, sorry.
And when we get to the design stage, they know that that's a priority of ours.
Excellent.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on the updated visual?
Just wondering, and again, I, I know we haven't gotten to your recommendation yet, but do you envision the film lab and the dark room occurring even if we don't do the courtyard?
Courtyard?
The courtyard, right.
So, they're red, right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's.
Yeah. So, yes, and the reason those are red is because they are attached to the fine arts classroom remodeling for 4.9. So, that would.
So, that's part of the.
The film and the dark room are included in that particular line item or project. So, whether we do the courtyard or not, that would be included.
Okay. I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure.
Good clarification.
I just want to reiterate Leah's questions. I mean, there are fewer, what I would, what I call more individual or one to two person practice rooms, but there's, I mean, there's a lot more space, right, for rehearsals, for practicing throughout. We might have less of those really small ones, but we've got a lot more space. You mentioned the green room, I just wanted to emphasize that again as I look through this. Just because it says steam lab doesn't mean you couldn't have an ensemble rehearsing there. Just because it says career pathways doesn't mean you couldn't have rehearsal, use that as rehearsal space, too. So, a lot more opportunities.
Oh, yeah.
And with having the full fly, so thank you, Board, for that consideration, you know, having that full fly means you've got that stage space now because you can get the scenery off of, off of the stage. A lot more opportunities.
I think another thing you'll, you'll notice in that bright red color, all part of the fine arts classroom, so, yep, it's, it's the hallway, you know, with ceramics lab, kiln room, 3D drawing, painting, it's the film and dark room, as Barry pointed out, but you'll notice the arrow also goes over to making sure that we address some of the needs that, you know, were brought up a number of times of just having the appropriate costume, dressing rooms and so forth. So, there is that section of the brighter red color over kind of in between the current auditorium and the new auditorium or proposed auditorium area. Okay, to go to the recommendation, are any other questions on the visuals? And I'm sure we'll go back to them if we refer to them. Team, anything else to add on the floor plans? Okay.
I do have one, but just to make sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think this is true, but if we go to the catwalk level floor plan, there will be an elevator going up that far for somebody who can't climb stairs to get there. I guess I'm asking rigid on that one, is that, that fourth level?
I don't know yet, so this says.
I don't know yet, so this says elevator, elevator, this one does not.
That's why I'm wondering. My understanding was we were gonna do that, I just wanna make sure that's still in, at least in the conceptual stage at this point. Because we want this to be accessible to anybody and everybody, and you need an elevator for that.
We can clarify.
We'll get clarification on that. All right, so let's go to the recommendation. So that's the color sheet and list of projects. You know, last time we, we had four different possible scenarios that we looked at. The board had requested we bring back a recommendation. So we continued to build off of option three, following the, the, the feedback from the community. We were really, as an administrative team, we approached this trying to look at it from the lens of, how do we continue to make sure we're addressing facility needs? Obviously, we've had several conversations as a board and administration about recognizing that, you know, there's going to be some conversations that will continue this fall to make sure that we continue to have the dollars and are budgeting the dollars to address rising costs with being able to maintain and invest in our facilities so that we have appropriate space and so forth moving forward. So we were looking at it from that lens of how can we approach these projects with, with that in mind, knowing that we're, we're likely gonna be looking at ways to increase that area, but also looking at it from how can we address and make sure that we're meeting the instructional needs of our students now, and also building into the recommendation those future needs that we already are recognizing and would like to make sure we're providing additional instructional space to meet those emerging instructional needs. Because again, everything that we've discussed throughout the past six months and has been on the list, these are all areas that are important, right? But really, the task that we're trying to do is how do you prioritize all of these projects? And so I wanna step through then why we arrived at certain projects that we deemed as a priority and would recommend being included in a potential referendum question at this time. It doesn't mean these projects may not come up, but they, they may come up, you know, in years to come. We may want to tackle them through some of our capital projects, but we really felt like these rose to the top. So let's kind of step through. So the first thing we discussed and, and looked at was trying to make sure, we were looking at the remaining dollars from bill 220. And as I think came up at the last board meeting, I think Dr. Bynne said coming soon to a facilities meeting near you. The plumbing, it's all, it's, it's a large project, so it's a lot of money to budget for. It's a project you can't separate, you need to do at one time, right? And so we arrived at that would be a good use with the bill 220 dollars that are available at this time to tackle that project. So our first recommendation was to utilize bill 220 dollars in order to accomplish the plumbing project. So we actually took it off of our recommendation for the 2024 potential referendum question. The other area that we discussed at length was then looking at it from that instructional lens. And there were conversations about former projects that were part of the first bid with the high school. There were the emerging needs and making sure that we continue to look at programming. In particular, the applied arts was a project that of the things that we discussed last time, the indoor turf, the servary, while they would benefit students and so forth, you know, they wouldn't rise to the top. But the applied arts was one, and the air conditioning was the other project. When we started to look at the options and the projects on this list and really talk about where could we maximize these spaces to maybe still achieve and accomplish the instructional needs now and in the future, our recommendation was to adjust the fine arts program enhancements by recommending the west edition, which is that career pathways classroom, as well as that collaborative workspace and gallery space at the top of the sheet. You will notice that while we're not recommending the courtyard renovation, providing greater flexibility and gallery space is still going to be accomplished in that west edition. And when you then think about the context of the applied arts and renovating some of those current physics classrooms, we felt that with the addition of a large instructional space, the career pathways in particular, and renovating the current orchestra and choir room to steam labs, that we would still be meeting that expectation for both of those areas. We're gonna, we're gonna increase flexible space, we're gonna have collaborative space, we're gonna have gallery space, and we're gonna have new additional instructional spaces to meet the needs now and in the future. So that's why we are recommending that we believe we can still meet those same objectives, but by, again, the board gave some parameters to us, get this price down, and so you start to prioritize. And so we felt we could still accomplish some of the objectives, but maybe spend less dollars and accomplish it through 5.9 million with the west edition, but not the full 12.7. So that brings our administrative recommendation for the 2024 potential referendum question to 64 million and estimated at 236 additional dollars on a average $500,000 home in Barrington, which meets the parameters the board had set of, we'd like you to be between 60 and 75. If you can get closer to 60, that would be preferred, as well as if you can also make sure the number coincides with a tax impact of less than 250. So we were able to accomplish the parameters set forth. The last piece was really looking at those projects that Sarah spoke to. And when we considered the number of students and the overall benefit for our, our entire school district, because while air conditioning, the main gym will certainly benefit the students at Barrington High School, right? We're gonna be able to use that throughout the day for a variety of instructional purposes. I mean, obviously, physical education will take place in there, but it also opens up some new opportunities when we talk about large spaces that are appropriately cooled, as well as after-school activities, as well as all the different ways. That's our largest space as a district. So when we bring the all-district orchestra together, we now have a cooled space that we can do that in the gymnasium. When we bring the middle school recognition, graduation, you know, programs, we have a space that's appropriate. There's also the benefit that, you know, so it immediately benefits a lot of needs we have right now, but it also opens some opportunities. We have a cooled space in the summer, we don't have to limit some of our camps or programming in the summer months to the morning because it gets too hot to continue to. So now we've actually opened up new opportunities that we're not currently providing, but we have new ways that we may imagine using that space, and that's again, a benefit to the entire school district. So we lean towards that recommendation with the remaining dollars between what's left from bill 220 after plumbing, as well as the grant reimbursement, that our recommendation would be to move that project forward. So that's a very high level of a lot of meetings that occurred over the last five weeks. I'm sure I'm forgetting things. Team, anything to add to what I described as far as our administrative recommendation?
Sounds great.
Great job. Thank you. And I, and Steve McWilliams, again, couldn't be here, but he was. I want to reinforce that Bridget and Steve, you know, really helped inform a lot of the programming since a lot of these projects do entail the high school. So with that, we are all available to answer questions that you may have.
Well, I guess I was probably one of the people pushing for the applied arts space more than anybody else, so, you know, I had some concerns about how are we gonna meet all the needs? But as you step through and explain to us, you know, how we can utilize the steam rooms, and we talked about that whole domino effect, right? If you, you know, think about the whole, think about this as a whole, and what are the needs? And I really just appreciate you guys all spending the time to take a look at that holistically and say, okay, we don't need to renovate that space because we've got enough renovated square footage and new square footage in that 2024 referendum. So I really appreciate you thinking that all the way through and enabling us to, you know, save, save. Reduce the cost of the, of the referendum, right?
Yep.
And accomplish perhaps another project that would be very beneficial for the whole district and, and complement the work that we are planning with referendum.
And there were, I think in the meetings from everybody here, from Steve, there were just some really exciting possibilities for like that career pathways space for the steam lab. Like, and it's, it's conceptual, like Sarah mentioned earlier, but there, if we can do half of what we talked about, I know others will have great ideas on the collaborative. It's really exciting what we can provide for students both during the day and after school and after school activities.
I appreciate you kind of sharpening your pencil and getting the numbers down. That makes me feel better about the ask that we're gonna have for our community. And as I, I feel like a broken record, but as I've said all along, I, I really wanted to bear down to our needs and not our wants. And I think you guys have done that, and I, you know, I appreciate the, the effort you've made. And, you know, if we can get this passed, I think we can really make things nice, nicer in, you know, in our high school and serve our whole community. So I'm, I'm pleased with your recommendations.
I have two ideas, possibly. Wow. So I, I see for our next meeting, we've got that summer project budget discussion coming up about will we change how we look at these long-term projects? And we've got three of them on here. We've got the plumbing, we've got the windows and doors and flooring, and we've got the mechanical systems. And so I'm wondering, could we take all three of those off of this and talk about putting them into summer budget planning in the future? Or if we have a budget surplus at the end of this cycle, thinking about it that way and taking those off and then putting back in the, 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 the other half of the fine arts enhancements in the.
Courtyard?
Courtyard. Yeah, because I, I don't think we wanna have, you know, we don't wanna be asking again. And that would give us a lot of flexible learning space, big square footage of possible more classrooms, because I know there's, I, I've, I've heard from the referendum committee and from community members that maybe there's a lost opportunity of students who, who wanna take a fine arts class and, and we don't have enough space to offer more sections or aren't able to do that. And that might give us more flexible space for the future, because we're not gonna wanna ask again in five years. The community's not gonna hear from us. And that would give us more addition, more space, more potential in this ask, and we could take the price off on some of the mechanicals and the structural things, possibly. And I know that's next meeting, and it's hard to do this all in the summer because, you know, you're only so many people and you're only here so many hours a day, which I understand, this is a lot of work. But those are my thoughts about this, to get a little bit more for our ask.
Well, the mechanical systems in the windows, doors and flooring is 2.8 million dollars, and the other, the courtyard addition is 6.8.
I, I, granted, we wouldn't be at 64 million, we'd be more at 67. Kind of a $250 ask per $500,000 home instead of a $236 ask per $500,000 home. But still lower than the 75 million where we started from.
I mean, I, I'm concerned about anything kicking down the road, any more of the summer projects, having been on facilities. I mean, if we can get a chunk done, I think we should, because we're still gonna have roofs and pavement, and there, there's still a long, playgrounds, and so, I mean, this, this is not gonna meet our, e- even if we came up with the money for this, we'd still have a summer projects budget way above that, and right now, we're not funding that. So, you know, as Steve knows, we'll be talking about DCEB, and, I mean, the money has to come from somewhere. So I just think we have to be careful that, you know, we're cautious with what we ask our community, but we also tell the community that we are taking care of some of the big needs so we don't have to kick it down the road, because I think we've done that for too long.
So I, I hear you, Leah, but I, I heard a couple things. So please correct me if I heard them incorrectly. Like, I heard that by renovating the classrooms, right, the stuff in red, we will be able to increase our attendance in those classrooms, so we won't have to have another classroom, but we're limited right now because of the configuration of some of these rooms. Right? And, and we can use, utilize some of this flexible space that we now have if we wanted to increase the, the capacity too. So that was the first thing you brought up was, was let's get that so we can have more classrooms. But what I understood was we don't need to build more classrooms because we can accommodate increased enrollment by renovating the space the way that it is presented to us. Am I understanding that correctly?
You are, and, and just to really quantify it and make sure, you know, Leah, you feel comfortable. Like, the plan by splitting the, the woods and the, you know, scene shop and so forth, you've already now, you've got two spaces that increases opportunities. Because again, now that we don't have as many things occurring in there, we may be more flexible with woods classes or other classes going in to use those spaces that may have been included in that courtyard addition. That's just one example. Really changing this orchestra and choir to steam rooms, more opportunity for those courses that would have been considered in the courtyard infill as flex, that really is what that is. It is a flexible space that we can utilize. And then the addition of the career pathways, now you've added programming all day long that doesn't exist and have a space right now, so it gives us more flexibility there too. So that's, what you're doing is exactly what we did over the last several weeks. I'm really trying to make sure, like, let's just look at it, let's make sure we're, again, meeting the needs now and in the, in the future. And I want to reassure you that we believe this is adding a considerable amount of flexibility to us and additional opportunities for our needs now and in the future. It's not just addressing some concerns that we have now with kids not being able to access those programs. So it's actually that plus additional opportunities. So we may add more programming as a referral.
The other thing I heard that you raises a concern was that we might have to come back in a couple years and ask for more money. I, I think that when you guys looked at this, you looked at this long-term. We're not planning on coming back and asking for more dollars in this space. I mean, I, typically, our referendums are to last 20 years, right? We're not, there's no intention, I'll make sure it's very clear, there's no intention that we would come back again.
We, we were, we were concerned, yes, to make sure these instructional spaces, as well as the facility needs, absolutely, that we're not gonna have to keep coming back for this, and that's why we prioritize some of the things that we did. You know, and we talked about earlier, you know, that auditorium, there were some misunderstandings. You know, we're adding additional seats to that auditorium and providing the access in wider aisles and all of those things that we don't have to come back. We don't have some of the same challenges we have today. We are meeting our needs of getting a grade level, because we're nowhere near 840 students right now per grade level at the high school. So we're actually building in a little bit of extra seating to give us more flexibility in these spaces. So yes, absolutely. Team, anything to add?
Can I ask just from a timeline standpoint, these projects that we pulled, potentially pulled out, the plumbing and the AC, what would, is that something we'd be moving on as soon as possible? Would be, we be waiting for to see if this, the referendum goes through? How, what, what are, what's the timeline?
I don't know if we discussed the timeline, but if you guys have an idea to share.
No, I, I think that we have to finish the construction so that we can solidify those numbers that Sarah talked about earlier, because those are still estimates, good estimates, but they're still estimates, right? So I think we need to solidify those numbers once we.
Is maybe a federated, would that confirm the availability of the dollars?
Yeah.
That's what I think I heard you say, right? We just have to make sure that they're truly available, right?
Yes.
But just to throw out there, if we say, yeah, let's go ahead with air conditioning, could it be done by next summer, or you, you think it might be a summer project for next year, or?
I mean, by this.
Theoretically, just.
Theoretically.
Yeah, I mean, no, no promise, just wondering.
Next week? No, next week.
I mean, I have an eighth grader this year, I'm just saying.
Did you say possibly even earlier than next summer?
No, I was saying definitely.
How about I give the team a couple days to dig into that a little bit and see if we can get an answer?
Yeah, I don't wanna.
In the, in the weekly.
Don't wanna get you into it.
A better estimate of timeline and so forth. But again, we're, we did, to answer your question, we do know that, like, especially the plumbing, I mean.
Well, that, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
I'm not just.
We want that done as soon as possible. So if that is something that we, you know, include in build 220 projects, we then would build a timeline because we know it needs to come sooner than later. You know, I don't, I don't wanna get to the point where we have a plumbing issue, right? We, we wanna address that.
And that would be a summer project? Plumbing would be, it's all, it's all cutting school, right? So it definitely, yeah. But maybe the AC of the gym could be in stages right? But maybe the AC of the gym could be in stages right? Do the roof first, then, you know, I don't know.
We can certainly find out.
We will, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then to, I think, Leah, you brought this point too, if we've got surplus, which I heard we potentially have, I wrote that down, 1.8 million, that I guess in my mind...
No, no, that's next year's budget.
In next year's budget. So for, if we have any surplus from this year, if we've got any dollars left, could we potentially remove things, additional things, to lower the cost of the 2024 referendum?
Well, I don't know that we'll have a final audit number by August 13th. We will certainly have a surplus, but I, there's so much still happening with our audit that I don't know that we'll have a final number by August 13th.
So it's a little bit of a timing issue? Because this is one of the things we talked about as well. Can we scoop another thing? Can we take another thing on? We're just a little bit ahead. We, we know there's going to be a surplus, right? But I think it's difficult for us to decide in a timeline that matches with when we need to submit a referendum question, to definitively say, we have a million, 2 million, 3 million? It could be this specific project or this specific project. We were hesitant, but I want to assure the board, we had that conversation, because we do know there is going to be a budget surplus, but it's challenging for us to commit to it now. And then what if conditions change? Or we commit to a project, we take something off the list, when we know we're having conversations about DECEB, we're having conversations about increasing, you know, the capital projects fund? It's just, that's where we started, like, I referred to, like, Sarah now was starting to get heartburn as I was asking, can we spend more? Can we take on more projects? Because again, we have the same goal. We want to try to get this number to have, you know, a lower impact on our community, but still delivering on the things that the community said, these, these are the things that we desire. So it's, it's that balancing act. So I wish, I wish we could have said, we can commit based on, but I think... And if I'm speaking too much for you, I want you to be comfortable with what I'm saying.
Yes, you are correct. And we shared in finance today that we will have a surplus. We don't know exactly what it's going to be. We've had some late property taxes from last year. We had strong property taxes in this spring. So it's larger than we budgeted, certainly, larger than we had anticipated.
It's a tiny, and some of it's tiny.
But it's, there's still so much happening with the audit. We don't know exactly what it will be, which will be part of our conversations with capital projects also moving forward. We have other projects to do, of course, that, that can be earmarked for those funds too. But you can...
No, you're fine. So I don't know if that helps or not. I mean, but I do, I want to assure the board, we did, because we thought about taking a few more things off and trying to earmark those, those additional dollars, but it started to get a little bit uncomfortable for us, knowing that right after we get these decisions set, we are going to have some pretty in-depth conversations about how do we look at funding our capital projects and fund them appropriately? I think it was 6.1 based on our square foot, right? Is that, am I, okay.
Yeah.
So we, we know there's some dollars coming.
Not to just repeat this again, but I think it's important. Looking at how our middle schools happened with our additions, and now sixth graders are happy, seventh and eighth graders are like, wait, you know, why are we back in this, in the other part of the building? I feel like the same thing is, is, is true at all of our buildings. Like, there's, there's better spaces and there's old-fashioned spaces. And this is an opportunity, if we do the courtyard, to give us more current updated future spaces that can be used for lots of things. And I just feel like we're going to miss the opportunity. I don't think it's 20 million, it's, you know, it's about 6 million. It's not, it's not tipping us over too far across the line, in my opinion, of asking the community. I, I think we should think about it. I know there's a couple of board members not here, I don't know what their views are, but I know we also have to move forward with this. We've got to, you know, we're moving forward. We've got our committee that has to look at what we decide tonight and see how they feel about it. And, you know, a lot of them said...
Leah, so now we have to have a, if we're going to have a referendum, questions got to be passed.
Yeah. It's our next meeting, we have to decide. So how about this, Leah, like, I hear you. I, I guess we can talk to the advisory committee till Thursday, not tomorrow, Thursday?
Thursday.
And hear what they have to say. I think we've heard from the administrative staff that it, it's okay, we don't need to have to have it. But let's hear from them as well. I think we can move forward with, with, because I think there's a couple of things we want to get out of before we leave here tonight, right? We want to have a good direction.
Do you want to talk through kind of timing?
Yeah. Why don't you do that?
Yeah. So, you know, sticking with the schedule that Dr. Carpenter presented, I think the May meeting, as far as what needed to occur over these meetings. So tonight, you know, coming out with a recommendation and the set of projects that then we can share with Chapman and Cutler, who is the firm that helped us with the bill 220 referendum question. We have engaged with them, you know, letting them know that we anticipate being, bringing a question forward, we would need some assistance. So coming out tonight with a recommendation from the board that we can share, they can start to craft a question, because what we would like is to give them the ability to turn that around and share it with the board, so that you have an opportunity to, to look at the question, because then we would need to put it on as an action item, right, at the August 13th meeting. And we believe, based on their feedback, they're in a position to help us with that and could do that for us. The other option would be is, if we don't have that question finalized, to put it on as an action item, then we would need to schedule a special board meeting, because remember, the date for us to submit is August 19th. I think it's really important that we have it as an action item on the 13th, which then allows us for the board to take action, for us to submit it, make sure there's no delay with days or submission or anything else, you know, and not, in other words, I don't want to do it the day of or the day before the deadline. Does that make sense?
Right. And I, yes. And I'm thinking that whether we do the courtyard or don't do the courtyard, and we can do some thumbs up here, but I know everybody's not here, wouldn't change the language that they formulate in that question.
I believe that is...
Probably not. It would be written, right, general enough.
I've taken a look at the last one, I started looking at one moving forward. No.
It would obviously change the number.
Yes.
Probably not the language. So probably pretty safe there. So I will take the action. I know I did talk, I did communicate with Diana and Erin, who aren't here tonight, before this evening, after we got our packet, to see if they had any, you know, big concerns. Of course, I'm not going to speak for them, but I'll make sure that I raise, Leah, that you raise this to see if, but I, I guess I kind of do want to do a thumbs up of how many people really want to think about putting that, that courtyard back in, to increase this from 64 to 70, right, 70 something.
70.8?
It'd be 70 million.
70-plus million, right?
70.8?
70.8.
Did you say 7.8?
70.8, yeah.
70.8.
So I'm, I'll, I'll start. I'm comfortable not adding it back in. I'm comfortable with the 64 based on all the information you've gotten so far. But I'm happy to ask the other two, you know, offline.
I am comfortable with the 64 also.
With which, I'm sorry?
I, with 64.
64.
Yeah, I'm also comfortable with 64. And I, I didn't say this earlier, but thank you for all the thoughtful and, you know, time put in. Do appreciate you getting it down to this number.
Leah, I hear you, but I, I feel much better asking community for 64 than 70.
However, Leah, you know, I was thinking about this too, and this more relates to the other projects.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if it's one of those things that, you know, would be a nice add-on and it could benefit students, I mean, I don't see why we can't factor it into the conversation we're going to have next meeting, when we talk about, you know, this in conjunction with the summer projects. I mean, I, I know we already said that we're going to try to talk about cost savings initiatives at that meeting and the like, because, you know, I, this is probably a discussion for next meeting, but as far as the other projects go, I feel like, you know, it would be much, it would be a much better story to tell that we got it down to 64 and we're offset it with some sort of savings on the backend, whether it be through, you know, an abatement or something, than just saying that we're going to take that money. And while I agree that, you know, we were elected to make that decision from the community, I just think it would be a much better story to be able to provide that back, even if it's just half or some percentage of the whole.
So you're talking about from the 2020? I want to make sure that we're not...
Yeah, from the other projects, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm very content with what was done for the 2024 potential referendum.
So you'd like to not spend 2020 money on the plumbing or on the air conditioning?
Yeah, I'm not going to...
And give the money back?
Not all of it.
And not have those projects happen?
Well, I'm not saying they shouldn't happen. I'm saying it should be part of the calculus that we talked about with regards to, you know, finding, finding ways to fund the summer projects at a greater clip. I think those fall into this category. And like I said, I'm not, I, while I started with returning the full six, I do think it's reasonable to use some of it, just maybe not all of it. I mean, the savings that we got from the actual projects, that's fair to use, in my opinion. The additional money that we made on the interest, I mean, I feel like that's money that we found that we should, again, as good stewards, return back to our taxpayers.
So, so you would say that we could, then we can't do either one of the projects that are listed here?
Potentially. But I think in, in accordance with what we talked about the last meeting, when we said we would do, you know, some searching with regards to non-programmatic cost savings opportunities, maybe we can still fund these, just through a different means.
I don't want to speak for you, Sarah, so I'll let you, I'll let you speak, but what I heard from a couple of meetings ago is that we really can't, because I wanted to do the same thing. I wanted to think about, could we take a $6 million project or $4.5 million project and use, you know, as we, if we change what dollars we set aside every year, could we use that to do some of these things? And the answer I heard was no, because we've got, how many millions square, over a million square feet of buildings? And they showed us, was that just the last meeting, that we should be spending, probably with the number 3.1...
6 million.
You know, up to 6.1 million every year, just to maintain our facilities. So a big project like, like the courtyard or like the plumbing is not a good candidate to, to use those dollars for. That's what I heard.
Sure. And, and Dr. Vine has said many times, the, the list of things that can be done is, is very, very long, and that won't go away if we use these dollars somewhere else.
So, so maybe one thing that might be helpful is, is as we, you know, we, we did a study, a facility study a couple of years ago, right, that came back and said 500 or 600 million, right? And so, kind of where are we on that spectrum? I think, are we meeting the needs for the next 20 years with what we're asking for in 2024 on these large bulky projects? And make sure that that's pretty clear to us, so that we know that we're not, we're not having to fit in anything with the dollars that we're asking for right now.
One of our strategic priorities is the infrastructure and facilities project, which is going to result in a long-range facilities plan, which we are working on. It will not be done August 13th, but we are certainly working on it.
And, and just to clarify, that horizon is how many years forward? So when you have it done, it'll tell us the next 10 years of capital, or that's 20 years of capital?
20?
20, but it's, it's also a rolling project list, right?
Sure.
Every year, as you complete projects, you're going to have more projects that add on, you know?
Sure.
You replace a roof in one year, that new roof now has to go on in a future list to be replaced in the future. So it is a rolling project.
Right. And it's not in today's dollars, it's in future dollars. So in other words, if we were to look at 2035, it would be what we project the 2035 cost would be.
Correct.
Well, and Steve, I totally hear you, but I really want that air conditioning. But, no, I, I also think we should consider that maybe if we are able to use those dollars towards these projects, that then we are able to not, to do the DECEB again. Like, maybe we're able to make that up in other ways.
Sure.
Because we won't have to use that money to fund one of these, to do the plumbing or to do the exhaustive lifts of summer projects that have to get done. Because I, I, I agree with you. I would love to, I just always see that facilities list. See, I told you, putting me on facilities was the smartest thing you guys did. But I would like to be able to continue to do that, and I don't think we're going to be able to if we don't fund some of these projects, in my opinion.
No, I hear, I, I hear you. Like, this is a hard decision, right?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I hear you. Although I, I guess I didn't hear the answer for Sandra's question. Did we, did we, I thought at the last meeting, we agreed we were going to look into this a little bit more for August 13th. Is, am I incorrect?
We are. I believe that we said we would come back with recommendations...
Okay.
On a baseline, how much we're recommending to spend and how, potential ways of funding it.
Perfect.
Yes, that is on the agenda for the 13th.
Okay.
And I think, Steve, I, I hear you and I, you know, if we were to only spend 3 million of what the, what's left over, you know, we, we had the grant reimbursement funds that we, we agreed to set aside too. But if we take this real simply, the numbers in front of us are up, that we would spend 8 million, right? And we take that, those, the reimbursement funds and the 6 million, and we would spend 8 million. If we were to only spend 3, then that means our 2024 potential referendum would have to go up by 5 million.
Well, no, 3.5, right?
Nope. 8 million is what we were planning on spending. We were to reduce that to only 3, and spend only 3.
But 2 of it is rem, is grant, it's grant funded, right?
It's a reimbursement of expenditures that we've already incurred.
Okay, so let's even just say 5. Okay, so we spend the 3 plus the 2.
Yeah.
And let's spend 5, that means we'd have to increase the 2024 referendum by 3 million.
Or you use surplus funds that have to be finalized.
Correct. Or you use surplus, right, or you find cost savings down the road as well. I mean, I guess that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying we should not do. I, I mean, I'm no, I'm in no position to say plumbing is greater than AC or vice versa. I just don't know. I mean, I'm going to defer to the administration on that decision. What, what I'm suggesting is that, is there a path where we can put something back to the taxpayers? Like I said, I'm perfectly content with how the team decided to modify the potential referendum for '24. I think it's fantastic work, and I'm glad that it will meet the needs of our students.
So I'll just ask the direct question. Is there anybody that wants to consider abating some of the 2020 referendum dollars back to the taxpayers?
Well, I don't think that's a decision we need to make right now, is it? Because we still need to actually finalize the interest income that we have following the arbitrage adjustment, and I think we still need to wait for the audit. And to be fair, I don't think these are going to really take off until probably after summer, right? I mean, that's kind of what I heard.
Well, we can, we need to finalize it 2024.
2024, I think it would work.
Right?
Right? 2024.
Because if we're not going to do some of these other projects, they have to go on to 2024. So, yes.
Are we saying they have to be this year? I, I didn't think we were in that position.
No, on the referendum.
On the referendum.
No, I get it, but...
We need to know the number we're going to ask for.
Oh.
So let me ask it this way. Well, we can talk about it again on August 13th. can talk about it again on August thirteenth, but I just want to give you a feel for where the board is. I don't know where the board is, if the board really wants to consider us abating some of the three million of the, of the twenty-twenty referendum dollars. Who's in favor of, of supporting that at this time?
Okay, Steve. Firstly, I think it's six to one, half dozen to another at this point, because if you're, you're either abating it, or you're adding it on to the referendum. So I don't, like-
Well, I mean, I hear that, but I guess what I'm saying is, can we not add it to the referendum and wait? Because I mean, and maybe I'm wrong here. I don't go to high school enough to say this, but I, to me, the AC is not a, a need. I don't think anything's going to fall apart if we don't do the AC this year. That's just my opinion, though. And then similar with the plumbing. I mean, plumbing we first heard about, what, two, three meetings ago? I mean, I don't-
Plumbing's been on the list.
Has it been? I don't recall that, to be honest.
Yeah.
Was this truly a, is this truly something that's going to fall apart in the next twelve months?
There is potential. We're, we've already been patching and maintaining the plumbing at the high school. And it, to Sandra's point, the plumbing has been on the list as priority facility needed. And as we've conveyed, this is something that is going to end up-
Has to be done.
And it's a large amount that has to be done sooner than-
It's way past the useful life, and we're taking chances if we wait too much longer.
Okay. Well, I mean-
It's problematic, because it's a large ticket item-
Sure.
It should all be done at once, so that you're not-
Sure. Now, that, that part, that part I heard.
The building has been built.
Okay, well, then I guess-
It's recommended.
It's the biggest number that we could pull from the twenty-twenty-four and, you know, spend it. And I, I believe what we're, what we're spending the money on, the remaining twenty-twenty referendum, is exactly what we said we were going to spend it on, is things just like this. So we're able to fit in this bulky item into twenty-twenty-
Okay, so then maybe-
It's a great move.
Sure. So then maybe plumbing's off, off, off the table, but I guess I'll just ask the question again, I don't know, is AC absolutely critical?
I would think you should go to a summer camp. I will tell you, Steve, from just from a personal experience being in there, and countless times, it is unbearably hot in that gym. During the summer, they have to take the temperature in it and see if it's safe for the kids to go in there and do their stuff around certain hours. To Craig's point, that then limits how many kids can be using it. Um, now, is it, and I think we're discounting the fact that it's not just used by the high school. All the schools go over there and use it for things, and that it can be used for so much other stuff. So is it a need by tomorrow? No, but I do think it's a project that would greatly benefit us.
From my understanding, then, is the AC in the gym right now broken? I thought there wasn't-
There is no AC.
Yeah, exactly. So there's no AC, right?
There is no AC.
There is, in the big gym. There is AC in the small gym that we just built with twenty-twenty-
Oh, so what I'm saying is, we've gone, what, sixty years without it? Now suddenly it's this humongous priority? That's what, that's where I'm having trouble wrapping my head around this.
I wouldn't say it's a tremendous priority that just emerged. I think it's been an ongoing condition that we've been working with, but it does hinder or limit, there's limitations by having our largest space in our entire district without any air conditioning. So it does put limits on what we do from the high school perspective, as well as the district perspective. And just going back to our conversations, this was the one that we tried to prioritize of, like, what is something that's a facility need, but it's also going to impact the greatest number of students? That one probably is going to impact the greatest number of students immediately, and open up some new opportunities for kids at all levels, as well as our, have a learning space that's conditioned.
And I will say, I know this only happens twice a year, but honestly, like, a lot of, it's hard for some people to come to graduations for their eighth graders, especially if you're elderly or have ki, it is unbearably hot in there, and you can't climb up. They are not able to climb up, like, my parents, they're not able to climb up the bleachers, and there's no, so I know that I'm talking about like a one-off situation.
Sure.
But it's-
It's two-off.
You know, a two-off situation. But it is, but you're right, we've all been dealing with it. That's, that's true.
I, I, to be honest, I almost didn't even go to one of my kids' eighth grade recognition, because I was like, I don't want to go sit in that gym. I really didn't.
And as Craig said, if we do air conditioning, there would be other things we could do in the gym that we don't even think about now, you know?
Just off the-
Elementary school, uh, sports camps or something, or-
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't utilize that space due to its lack of air conditioning, and that would afford us now, because we can appropriately cool that space, it opens up new opportunities for us throughout the summer months, as well as the fall and spring. There are times that, you know, we make decisions, Nicole, you're aware of it, right, where some of those fall sports that are back, it's too hot to host certain events, or have PE classes in there in those first, you know, several weeks of school. It eliminates that need. There's just, again, it's probably the, the area, and I'm not trying to sell it, but it, it really is the area that probably impacts the entire school district, because it's our largest space, and it's utilized by all different entities throughout the community, really.
Sure. No, I mean, I hear you. I guess I'm just, yeah, I don't know.
You know I don't love surveys, but I promise you, if you did this survey, I, I hear more about this gym than I hear about probably anything else.
You know, interestingly enough, I've actually heard quite a bit about it, too. Um, I guess part of the feedback I hear, too, is just, you know, what I just shared, which is, why haven't we been thinking about this for many years versus just-
Well, it's got that from last referendum.
We have been, it just hasn't been-
It's a, it's a large price tag. We tried to fit it in in the first bid, but because of the dollar amount, and, you know, sitting at three and a half million, when you look at all those other things that we were responsible to deliver on with the high school projects, that was one that we were hoping to get in, but the numbers came back and we weren't able to afford it.
And we're hoping that maybe we would have some money left at the end, and it would come back.
Yeah.
Okay.
I hear that.
Just what happened.
I mean, you guys know how I feel about this. I, I obviously defer to the entire board over this, of course. I guess, like I said, the path should be, what can we do with our surplus that we'll have at the end of this fiscal year, or the last fiscal year? What can we do with future cost savings initiatives that we can implement over the next fiscal year? And what are other ways that we can, you know, potentially raise and, you know, fund these additional summer projects?
I, I would love-
It's all, I think it's all work that's already in, in, kind of like, you know, in place already.
Yep. I would love to even reduce it from sixty-four, we can, right?
Yeah, I would love that as much, actually, but-
So maybe there's, maybe we'll have more information, or maybe not, but-
Well, there's a contingency bill on all these numbers, correct?
Sure, sure.
I mean, in theory, this includes contingency, I think, just so that we can get a good number.
Right. So there, there's a cushion in here to begin with. So there's-
Well, everything would have to get designed, cost in, you know?
A contingency, and-
Well, meaning like, we have some, we have some space in the event that we're misjudging, or, you know, commodity prices increase without, you know, or, without, with, over the course of time, that kind of-
Right. We, we've not built in an indefinite amount of money to project this out into the future. So this is presuming that we're moving forward, um, you know, with, or an approval process that's going to get this project done over the next eighteen months or so, and the pricing is estimated accordingly. Contingency funds are always included in these projects, because we don't always know what conditions are until you break into a wall, until you dig into the ground, until you open up the roof.
Sure.
And things happen. And what we, when you talk with, with architects and construction managers, they'll often tell you, uh, it's somewhat irritating, but they'll often tell you, you should just always plan on spending all of your contingency. Now, as school business official, I, I don't like that approach. I like to say, well, if we do our due diligence right, it's there in case something comes up that's unexpected. But the reality is, when you do a lot of these projects, you, you spend contingency. And what you heard Ms. Lager talk about earlier was, we're about, just over halfway through our, about halfway through our construction for the summer, and the contingency that we have available, we're just running a pace with that. We're just over halfway through spending of available contingency funds. We're hoping we might return a little bit from the summer work, but a lot of it's going to get consumed. So it's not a cushion, it's there because there are things we just don't know about. Ideally, there's a little bit of this money that might be left after these projects are done. It's not the bulk of the money, it's not, it's not a padding, it's not a cushion. It's just because we don't really know exactly what the costs will be and conditions will be with construction.
Sure.
So I just want you to know, your, your team here is doing the right, the right kind of work, and we've got really quality partners with architects and engineers, construction managers to help manage this, to make sure that the dollars are spent appropriately. And just like we did with our referendum, if there's money to be brought back to the district that we don't have to spend, it comes back to you, so you have a conversation.
Okay. All right, so have we, have we given you everything? So I think, I think, let me just, let's just make sure that-
Are you going to do the summary?
I'll let you do the summary.
All right.
But before you do the summary, I'm just going to make sure that the board is comfortable with moving forward and doing the language for the, for the, um, potential referendum that we would vote on at the next meeting, based upon the recommendation that's in front of us. With all the things we discussed, I didn't hear any movement off of the recommended, changes from the recommendation. So is everybody comfortable with that?
Still the community on Thursday, maybe you have some-
Just for now, for now, to move forward.
Right. I just want to clarify the Thursday meeting. Um, so Josh, can you speak a little bit about what's planned for Thursday and, and, you know, what the RAC is going to be asked with? Because they've brought their recommendation forward, so I just want to make sure we're not overpromising of the work of the RAC on Thursday.
Sure. So on Thursday, our plan is that we would provide the RAC with an overview of where we've, where we've been, and the feedback from the community, and that, and that, yes, the recommendation was to move forward with option three, but the ask of the Board of Education was to be as thoughtful as we could about projects that would fit within the referendum twenty-twenty-four versus those that could be funded through other sources. And so this conversation tonight is so helpful, as we'll bring that information to the Referendum Advisory Committee and ask them a couple of questions. So they'll have some work time to really give us some feedback on what should communication look like from moving forward, and also who may want to be involved with the education, referendum education committee moving forward. So there'll be a, a couple, a couple opportunities for the Referendum Advisory Committee to give us some feedback on, this is our plan, this is our recommendation moving forward, and, and ask for some, ask for some feedback. Not only what, not what we're missing, or what needs to change, but this is how we arrived, this is what we heard, and this is how we arrived at, at the, at the recommendation.
So just to be clear, like, my hesitation in wanting to clarify things was, we asked them to attend so many meetings, arrive at a decision, and a recommend, recommendation for the board. They, they've delivered on that. We didn't build in a, hey, can you give us, can you vote again, can you use additional feedback on what the board? So I just wanted to be clear, like, we can seek some input and some feedback from them, but I also don't want to overcommit them that they're now confirming voting or anything on what the board decides. This is the board's decision. Does that make sense?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I kind of thought it was an opportunity for them to, like, give some feedback after the board talked.
That's what I mean. They're going to give feedback, but I just didn't want anyone leaving with a perception that they were going to actually-
Vote or something.
Vote or do anything official. That it's, this decision rests with the board, and I just don't want to put them in a position where they didn't sign up for another round of, you know, voting and expectations and so forth. We're going to ask them for some feedback and some refinement, but we didn't build into the charge that we asked them to do, like, kind of a, another, you know, step or check on the board's work. Does that make sense?
We'll ask them their thoughts and opinions.
You look confused. I mean-
Yeah.
Oh, no, I didn't expect a vote, but I, I thought the purpose of the meeting after we met was to give us more feedback, and, and also do the education piece and the next steps. I thought it was both.
I don't think it's a quiet group. They, they will, no, they're like-
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. Yes, yes. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't-
Right.
Perceived as it's formally, we're asking them for feedback. I think we will ask some questions. I think they are a vocal group. I think they will share perspective, which will be helpful for the board's consideration, but I just didn't want to overpromise, because really, that meeting is more about, okay, now that we're at this point, those next steps and so forth. That's why that meeting was scheduled after the board arrived at a decision, so that there could be an opportunity for that group to discuss the next steps as well.
All right. So bring those, the same materials forward for them?
Yep.
That we have across.
Yep. Okay.
So we're comfortable, board, with moving forward, getting the language for, um, our next meeting based upon the recommendation that's in front of us here. Yes. Understanding, Steve, that you wanted to abate some back, and Leah, that you might want to add more, but at this point, I don't think we've got the support.
Yeah, I think it's all numbers at this stage, isn't it? So it's not going to impact what, oh, I forgot the name of the-
What the question is, yeah.
Yeah, what the question is.
But we will, we will be taking formal action. The plan is to take formal action at the next meeting. So at this point, we're, you know, giving our thumbs up, giving our nod in the right direction, but we will take action. And I will make sure that, I know that Erin and Diane are going to be listening, probably not listening right now, but they will be lis, they'll listen to the conversation, I'm sure, and I'll make sure that I point out those two pieces that we discussed, to see if they wanted to, to bring them back up again.
Okay. So our administrative team will then take the recommendations from the board as it's presented tonight. We'll have the question drafted. We will be able to turn that around, and so the board will have a chance to see the, the question. We will build the agenda for the August thirteenth with an action item for the referendum question for the board's consideration. Um, we've talked a lot also about the August thirteenth meeting and having that conversation about, you know, kind of capital projects, how do we, you know, approach capital projects, how do we address our facility needs going forward. Um, that's not a one-and-done conversation, just to make sure. I anticipate, just like this took a few meetings, I don't think we're going to come into August thirteenth and leave August thirteenth with, this is what we're doing moving forward. Just, for whatever reason, I was getting the sense that that was going to be a decision meeting, and maybe I was misinterpreting that from the board, but just, I think our expectation is we're going to present, have some information to share, but then we would anticipate continuing that discussion as we move through the process. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yes, makes sense.
Okay. All right, thank you for the feedback. Team, again, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you a lot.
All right, so board, you can see what our agenda items are for our next meeting. I'll just read through them. The referendum question will be our action item. Um, board meeting format, I mentioned in my report, right? We had asked Dr. Wickelman and his staff to consider a change to a board meeting format, so we'll talk about that. We will also discuss solar, tentative budget, summer projects, Bill two-twenty final project recommendation, and again, discuss, probably do that as part of our referendum question, probably have a discussion on the, on the referendum. So we've got a big agenda, so I'm glad we're done a little bit early tonight, since I don't think we're going to be done early on August thirteenth.
The referendum will be an action item, too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We would probably combine that. We would have a discussion item and a-
Oh, I didn't know.
And you don't anticipate we'll be actioning on the solar? We're not at that point where we need motions or anything? Is it more just discussion?
Well, Nicole and I actually were, were talking about this. The last time that we came forward with this, we kind of got a thumbs up to move forward with a contract. So if that's a possibility, we might go down that road, and then we'll bring the final contract to the board to approve, so that we can keep moving on the process and start the project this calendar year, which is important to us.
The contract is actually in the request for proposal package that went out on the street. So that contract's already been prepared by our attorney, and it was part of everything that's there, so it would be part of the documentation that, you know, board members have an opportunity to see. So it's not like there's a negotiation or development of something new beyond that.
Aside from price.
Yeah, all that work has been done. It's, it's the price.
It's the price. That would come-
So, so I'm, I'm hearing you probably would not have an action on the thirteenth, just discuss, give us the approval to move forward with our recommendation. We will finalize, we'll negotiate price with our selected contractor or vendor, and then we'll come back with a final contract.
Okay.
That gives us an opportunity to start doing some work with our selected vendor, so that we can get things rolling.
Good clarification.
The rebate line is looking good. Hint.
Yeah.
Um, I meant to ask this during your report, but I know it's good news. Can I, because I get a lot of questions, too, about the parking lot, which is Chuck drugin' along, right?
Yes.
The parking lot?
Yes.
So, yeah, I debated whether that would be my superintendent report, like we did last year at this time, for that August meeting, of making sure-
Okay, you're going to go over it?
I'll probably put it there versus it being a discussion item. I may even have, you know, Steve here or others, Teresa with Safety and Security, because again, we know there's a need to overcommunicate expectations as we're returning to school, especially with a new parking lot configuration.
But as of now, the good news is it's moving along on time.
It is. It's, it is. On track, and everything's looking good, right? So-
I already covered it.
Well, things are happening in the village, too, at the beginning of the school year, right, with the overpass and stuff.
Yeah.
So that'll be affecting everybody. All right, my question is, is the corn growing across the street that we have answered? And Steve's not here to update.
I can, I can-
All right.
The corn's growing.
I can even have pictures to share, but it is progressing very nicely.
Yay.
Yay.
Awesome.
Excellent.
As, as are moms that are being grown and having green homes.
Oh. To be ready for, for the fall mom sale.
You know, you know, I was going to email him, but maybe if I could just ask you, he said we can, in his email, we can go visit. But is, is that, do we have to give him a heads-up first, or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, got it.
At the high school, for sure, at this time, right?
All right, good news.
Yeah, good stuff.
All right.
Thank you, board, for a great discussion tonight. Really appreciate it.
Very good, very thorough. So if there's no further comments, we will, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.